Kevin, why don't you let me know when we're live? He's not on yet, so why don't we give it a minute and make sure Commissioner How can jump on? And then I'll give a quick announcement as to why there's just two of us sitting here today. Commissioner How's on? He's not on yet. Let's look at that. Okay, let's give it another 30 seconds to a minute and then we'll get started. I just talked to him. I was on a call with him just a few minutes ago. We will go ahead and move forward. I want to welcome everybody's staff meeting for Tuesday. What's our date here? Day of the week is this, David? It's the sex. Yeah. It's been that kind of month already happening. So welcome, everybody that's joining us today. We've got a full schedule with a good presentation. I do want to make note a couple of things. Number one, Commissioner How's joining us on Zoom. He's recovering from a shoulder surgery. I asked his permission to share what he was recovering from, and he said that would, that was fine. So he's recovering at home. He's going to join us here. Commissioners Meitzir, Commissioners Lopez are at a prearranged event at WSU Tech, and they are going to come back and watch the video and then follow up with staff for any questions that they have. But they communicated this morning. And so Commissioner Dennis and I are here in person, and we have a lot of people that are here today because this topic is incredibly important and interesting. And, and we're excited to visit with our friends from MAPD. So with that being said, Mr. Manager, why don't you take us through staff meeting?
Good morning, Chairman and Commission. We had two items for today. We were going to have Laura Forshe come in and just do a 911 update, but we've re-calibrated that for tomorrow at B O C C so we could pay full attention to this subject. So Scott will start us off. We have a discussion about the solar moratorium and give us an update.
Well, good morning, Scott.
All right. Good morning. So thank you very much for the opportunity to present. In just a minute, I'm going to turn it over to Justin so that he can provide the presentation. But I just want to take a minute real quick to introduce the topic. So the purpose of today's presentation is to provide you an update on the current status of this civic discussion, and most importantly, to get your feedback and questions. The moratorium is scheduled, as you know, to expire on March 20th, so we're working diligently towards that date. The MAPC Advanced Plans has been working substantially on this topic since October of last year. I believe that we have the chairperson of the MAPC Advanced Plans watching online. Unfortunately, she had a cold, and so I believe that's, she said, indicated she was going to join online. In addition, we also have other members from the MAPC Advanced Plans Committee here in the room, which is great. I also want to acknowledge that staff from multiple departments have been working on the civic initiative and have been very important to getting it to this point. So thank you for their efforts. In addition, we've received comments from many stakeholders who have taken time to attend meetings, fill out surveys, submit emails and more. So Justin will provide some highlights from some of that input. And please know that we have the reports and collections of the input posted on the project website. So lots of folks involved, lots of work to this effort. And so, Justin, I'm going to turn it over to you to go ahead and take us through the presentation.
Good morning, Justin. A couple of question real quick. What's best for you? We're going to have some questions that pop up through this. Would it be okay if, as we're going, if we stop and try to stay on that topic and ask questions so that we don't have to try to come back? And I think it might be better to have a lively conversation in the moment with that topic that we're discussing. Is that okay with you? You're good with that, Commissioner Dennis?
And to go along with that, I appreciate, first of all, I want to thank everyone from Advanced Plans and from Planning Department for the time and effort that they put into this, for this point. This is the first opportunity that the commissioners have really had an opportunity to weigh in on what their work has been up to this point. I think it's appropriate that we do give a little bit of guidance on what we feel the direction is that we need to go in the future. But thanks to everything they've done so far. I do have a number of questions as we move through this, so I appreciate that we can stop there as we move forward. I will have some questions here later on.
Thank you. Okay. Justin, welcome.
Good morning, everybody. Justin Constantino with the Planning Department. Very happy to be here this morning. Okay, so I'm here to provide you with a solar update. Maybe. There we go. Okay, so today what I'll be doing is giving a brief presentation, reviewing the information and looking for comments and feedback from everyone in attendance today. Just a couple of quick notes. The Sedgwick County Solar Moratorium allows a legislative review. We're not considering any specific applications at this point. Current draft changes would be for Sedgwick County and the city of Wichita as we look to potentially make changes to both the Unified Zoning Code and the Comprehensive Plan. And this topic does not include accessory uses like solar on a building roof. It's specifically related to large-scale utility solar. I will discuss existing conditions, kind of what we're currently doing, current status, what the process has been like thus far, the public input that we've received, the themes that we'll be discussing. And then I'll go into next steps. We will discuss additional topics in relation to large-scale utility solar. And then I'll also provide a SCAC meeting update. That was a January 20th meeting, SCAC being the Sedgwick County Association of Cities. Okay. Thank you. Existing conditions. So back in 2019, we made changes both the Unified Zoning Code as well as the Comprehensive Plan regarding renewable energy systems. The Comprehensive Plan pages are in front of you. There should just be two pages there regarding renewable energy systems that discusses solar. Basically, the way the Unified Zoning Code currently is written regarding solar energy conversion systems is it's a conditional use. There are approximately 20 supplemental information requirements, the ability to add conditions as needed as we review any kind of solar applications. And there is a formal review process that involves citizen advisory boards, the Planning Commission and the County Commission. Again, the Comprehensive Plan is generally designed to give us guidance on this topic. Selecting appropriate locations will be challenging. These are highlights from that section of the Comprehensive Plan. Design and performance standards need to be established and protect the viability of existing cities and their ability to grow. That is text taken directly out of that Comprehensive Plan document. Again, not a lot of language there, but it is about two pages within that Community Investments Plan document. This is the solar moratorium process, and we are kind of getting close to the finish line at this point. We are right here, which is the Citizen Advisory Boards, District Advisory Boards, Sedgwick County Association of Cities. Like I mentioned earlier, we're currently taking the show on the road through the month of February. The goal being to get feedback today, take this to the Advanced Plans Committee on February 8th, so just a few days from now. So hoping to get as much feedback as possible. Here is the full schedule. We had a couple of meetings at the DABs last night to present this information. We, like I said, throughout the month of February, we will be taking this to both the District Advisory Boards and the Citizen Advisory Boards. February 28th, we have a meeting with the Wichita Sustainability Integration Board. Again, that February 8th date is something to keep in mind. That'll be this upcoming Thursday when we will present draft text changes to the solar code, to the Unified Zoning Code. Those draft text changes are in front of you. And again, Board of County Commissioners meeting, March 6th, and the moratorium expiration date of March 20th. All of the information that we've collected thus far is available in our staff reports. All of those staff reports are available online on the solar webpage. The Solar Town Hall Report, we had a town hall that we conducted back in mid-November, received a lot of good information there. We had an online solar survey that took place from November 16th through November 28th. We received a lot of good feedback there as well. Solar Best Practices Report, staff has done a lot of research looking at the best practices from other communities, academic resources, as well as public input that we have received throughout this entire process, all the way back in October through the present day. Again, best practices, we've looked at several different sources to assist in looking at potential changes to both the Unified Zoning Code as well as the Comprehensive Plan. Public input has been incredibly important throughout this entire process. Like I said, we started this whole thing back in October. We kicked it off with a town hall in mid-November. And then the public survey was available for a couple of weeks. We have been receiving letters and emails throughout this entire process, in-person comments. We certainly received those, and we have received a lot of input from elected and appointed officials throughout this entire process. We've received over 100 emails and letters. All of that is documented in that public input report. You should have that report in front of you, as I mentioned before, dated from October to present. And all of this information is available on the website as well. The themes that we really saw come out during both the town hall event and the survey are depicted on the screen here. The left being town hall, right being survey. We hosted the event, and a lot of the topics and feedback that we received that emerged from both of these items are listed here. We brought these items to the MAPC Advanced Plans Committee on December 14th and said, this is the biggest, these are the largest areas of concern, biggest topics. These are the topics that have shown the most interest throughout our fact-finding sessions. And we brought that to them, like I said, on December 14th and said, how do you feel about this? Would you like staff to proceed with these items? Would you like further research on these items? And the MAPC Advanced Plans Committee reached consensus on the 14th to move ahead with those. That's what this slide is depicting here. The, what we did from that December 14th meeting was we took those themes and we began to review. Again, we looked at existing data from our Comprehensive Plan, existing language from the Comprehensive Plan and the zoning code. We've continued to receive public input throughout this process. We looked at best practices and other communities. Basically, the whole point here is to look at potential changes to both the Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Zoning Code. The Comprehensive Plan being a bit of a broader document, the intent there is to provide guidance, whereas the Unified Zoning Code is what the applicant would be required to do. It is, it is what we would be following in terms of an application process. Themes. I'll start with decommissioning. So we presented, as I mentioned before, those four or five themes that emerged from both the public survey and the town hall event. Decommissioning was one of those. Advanced Plans, MAPC Advanced Plans recommended that we add this language to the existing code. So currently, these four items are not in our code as it stands today. They recommended the removal of solar equipment should be at a depth specified by ordinance. They settled on four feet. Financial assurance shall be provided by the owner-operator in the form of a surety bond or letter of credit. Plans shall indicate the length of time needed to complete decommissioning. So they've included language in the Unified Zoning Code for that, and that the applicant shall provide a statement that the owner-operator will notify the city in advance of any decommissioning, city or county. The Advanced Plans recommendation for the Comprehensive Plan was no changes recommended. They didn't see a need to add any language regarding decommissioning specifically to the Comprehensive Plan document. The next theme was groundwater and contamination.
One second. Yes, sir. I have some questions on decommissioning.
It stopped at the end of each major.
Certainly.
Then we can talk about these a little bit. For decommissioning, your recommendation is no changes recommend.
To the Comprehensive Plan.
Comprehensive Plan. So what kind of changes do you want to the zoning code?
If we could go back just one more slide, please. And maybe one more. Perfect. So it would be these four changes here.
That's where I wanted to stop. All right. First of all, you say that financial assurance. I need more detail on financial assurance. What I want, first of all, I don't believe in the letter of credit. I don't think that it would serve our needs. So I scratch that completely out, but it's going to have to be some kind of guaranteed financial assurance. It's going to have to be reviewed periodically, like every five years, because everything costs more as time goes on. So what I want is at the end of a certain period of time, I want it reviewed. I want an update on that financial assurance. The other thing is we've got to guarantee that if this project is sold, it transferred, that this, that has to be notified back to the county, and the financial assurance has to be transferred with it. You have to have a guarantee that financial assurance goes back with it. At the end of the, of the useful life of it, and then they start decommissioning. I'm worried about the environmental impact. You do have some things where that you're going to have them checked, I think, when they first go in and set the baseline and so forth. Want you to compare something that says they're going to have an environmental study to decide what it's like, and then like 90 days after they construct it, you're going to have another study. Is there a study at the end then to verify that it meets, that it's the same condition it was when they first put it in?
Yes, so we will have both pre and then periodic and then end review by staff during that process.
Okay. The other thing on it is with this environmental study, what happens to the panels? I do not want those left in Sedgwick County. I don't know how you recycle these panels. They do have some things in them that are hazardous, maybe not in large quantities, but we have no disposal here in Sedgwick County anyway. We ship everything to other county. So I want details on what happens at the end of that with all of the materials that come out of this. So I need a lot more definition on the decommissioning. See if I've got any other notes on that.
While you're going, if you don't mind, I might add some context. So the decommissioning contract, is that with the operator or the property owner? Because there's a, the assumption would be that there is a lease use agreement to put the equipment on the land unless they're buying the land. And now the operators of the solar would be the landowner. But my assumption is many of these, if they're leasing lands, a lot like what happens in Western Kansas with wind turbines or leasing farmers' land. So who's responsible ultimately for the decommissioning?
Great question. And Justin, I'm going to defer to you for some help on this one. The applicant needs to provide that as part of the application, but I'm going to defer to legal for clarification.
Kirk Sponso is going to fill that question, Chairman.
While you're doing that, Kirk, we have, we can, we can require what goes into a private contract in regards to solar, correct? And these will be private contracts between a private landowner and, and a solar company of sorts.
Kirk Sponso, Deputy County Counselor, we are limited in terms of the impact of agree, of private agreements between third parties. We are limited in that respect. In regards to the question about who would carry this duty, it would have to be the applicant. However, an applicant ultimately may be different from landowner due to, as you said, lease agreements, things of that nature. However, there does have to be ultimately be some sort of buy-in from the landowners themselves. That is a requirement of the application process, that the owners are the ones who are approving, going along with these basically applications for condition.
So let me, let me make sure I'm straight. I just want to make sure there's no ambiguity here. Is it the landowner that will be applying for a conditional use permit and then entering into a private agreement with a solar company of sorts, or is it the solar company that's applying for a conditional use or rezoning?
It would depend on the situation. Ultimately, I do see an opportunity for solar companies to submit the applications themselves and be kind of the primary force on it. But I, I think it would be a case-by-case basis. I could also see situations where landowners themselves want to start these projects, and so they're just the ones submitting the conditional use. But Scott Whale has something to say.
Yeah. Just an important point that in the state of Kansas for zoning action, the applicant needs to, the application needs to be signed by the property owner. So if it's a solar facility that's got 50 different property owners, they all need to sign off on the application.
I'll tell you what was motivating my comment is that as organizations and companies are going in and entering into private agreements, they want to make sure that landowners are protected, that they might not be walking into something from a decommissioning standpoint that they're not aware of. It might be, and everyone, they're responsible for doing their own legal research and such. I just want to make sure that property owners are protected, that they, that they understand exactly what they're walking into in some of these things.
And I, I just want to clarify here. I think some of the language certainly can be included in these provisions. But as, there's also the opportunity for there to be a requirement of a decommissioning plan being submitted as part of this, and that decommissioning plan would likely arguably have a lot more details of what's occurring, and that would be within the purview of the board to ultimately review and consider as part of their analysis.
So part of your recommendation is that there will be a decommissioning plan, correct, right?
That is actually, a decommissioning plan is already included in the regulations that were adopted prior. So that is, yeah.
But do those plans that have already been adopted, do they include everything that I'm interested in?
No, they don't. And so that's why this conversation is really helpful to make sure that we've got those items so that we can go back to advanced plans. And they're here, some of them are here today, but we can go back to them and say, here's what we heard from B O C C in terms of what they encouraged to be considered and would like to see. Where do you all stand on it and how, if, if they want to include those, how do we craft those?
Does the plan require a time that it has to, decommissioning has to take place? Once they notify us, they have X number of days and months or something before they have to have a decommissioning completed?
I don't believe that it gets that specific by memory. It provides.
Stretch on for years if we don't have a time in there. That's one of the points that I'm going to make throughout this discussion is that we have to have rules that whoever the developer is, that they are following the rules, that they understand the rules when they submit the conditional use, that the landowners understand the rules, and the county understands the rules. Because ultimately, this affects the entire county. This is a legislative issue that is county-wide. So I have to protect the county. That's one of my main concerns.
And Kirk Sponso, Deputy County Counselor, if I may hop in as well, just with some of these concerns raised about the decommissioning plan, I'm just going to read some of the text of what is already included in our code concerning these plans. In relevant parts, some of it says that the applicant shall provide a site and facility reclamation and decommissioning plan, which indicates the plan life of the SECs and the means by which it will be decommissioned and reclaimed. Said reclamation decommissioning plan shall certify that any owner of land within the SECs and its site, who is not the applicant, has been consulted in the development of the reclamation and decommissioning plan. So it's required that, hey, you have to verify that there has been buy-in from the owners of this decommissioning plan. In addition, they talk about updates of the plan every five years until the reclamation decommission is complete. And it also indicates the reclamation and decommissioning plan shall provide that at the end of the project's life or array component of any SECs. All or the appropriate portion of the site's equipment and access road shall be removed from the site, and the site shall be returned to its original condition and restored to such condition as to allow a use compatible with the surrounding uses. So some of those requirements are within our code. Now, I, as indicated before, the site, the decommissioning plan itself would arguably flesh out a lot more details of where this equipment's going or how it's being removed, things of that nature.
Okay. But again, I want to make sure that there are rules that are written that whoever the applicant is, whoever the company is, understands the rules going in, and at the end, that they understand those rules as they're going back out.
So what I would like to do is reflect back on what I've heard so far just about decommissioning, which is, would like to see more detail and guaranteed financial assurances. So especially concerns about letter of credit.
The financial considerations are really high priority to me because this could be sold numerous times. This is going to have possibly 30, 50-year lifespan, and it could be sold several times. And if it doesn't transfer to whoever the new owner of this project is, it could get lost. And at the end, who's going to be responsible? It's that landowner and probably fall on the county. So.
For the decommissioning, right?
Yeah. And then the second one is, you want it to be reviewed periodically, revised and updated, that you would like to see it transferred with the ownership, as you just indicated, with notification periodically to the county. Also, concerns about environmental impact, and I just want to acknowledge, we haven't quite gotten to that part in the conversation, but we'll get there. And then questions about what happens to the panel. And we've heard that preference would be not to have them left in Sedgwick County. And you want to, I think the sense is that you want to make sure that they're disposed or handled or treated appropriately, as they should be, so that they don't become a concern in and of themselves. And then the legal, the concerns about, you know, the protecting the property owners and the county at the same time. And then, yes, and then discussion about the decommissioning plan and just the mechanism. Oh, and then have a clock or a timing mechanism for when the decommissioning needs to take effect after the project, the life of the project.
That's all my thoughts on decommissioning right now, for now. If you want to keep rolling, Justin.
Sure, I'll keep rolling. Groundwater and contamination. So the Advanced Plans Committee reviewed this particular topic, and what they settled on was requiring pre-construction, periodic and post-construction soil and groundwater testing within 90 days of substantial removal of any portion of the system. This kind of gets at what we were talking about just a little bit earlier on the decommissioning. But as far as soil and groundwater testing goes, any zoning application or any solar application that we receive will include a list of construction materials to be reviewed by the Director of Sedgwick County Environmental Resources and H H W for recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. So any application that comes through those materials will be reviewed by staff as well. The MAPC Advanced Plans Committee on the Comprehensive Plan, no changes recommended. So all the changes were recommended to the Unified Zoning Code. I'll stop on that topic there if you have any questions.
And I would note that Susan Erleman is here, our Environmental Resources Director. And Susan, you might make your way up here because I might have a question or two for you, but go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. As far as the environmental portion of this, do we have something that talks about the ground cover erosion, kind of protecting the environment surrounding that runoff? Kind of protecting the environment surrounding that runoff? Is there anything in our zoning codes that cover all that?
Susan Erleman, Environmental Resources, as any permit, we have stormwater regulations already in place for best management practices to keep erosion runoff from happening. And also there are many environmental aspects to the current regulations before the moratorium that require an environmental site assessment per EPA standards. We need to look at, no bare ground is allowed. Any plantings we are promoting pollinator plants be put in place. The more root systems you have, the less erosion you will have during a storm event. But my department's actually in charge of part of the stormwater procedure and inspecting of best management practices during and after construction. So we would be out there looking to make sure that there is no runoff occurring at a site.
So part of the conditional use, when there's an application comes in, it's going to address the ground cover. It's going to address erosion.
The stormwater engineer would look at it for the slope of the land. What kind of best management practices, usually silt fencing and other practices could be retention ponds put on the site to make sure that any water is directed to that pond, so it does not run off. So it would be reviewed by the stormwater engineer, Scott Lindenbach, and our office would do the inspection.
Okay. It's a shallow water table out there in certain locations within the county.
Yes, since it's not site-specific, we would look at the depth to groundwater. There's already data by the Kansas Geological Survey that has well data. I can go to their website, look at the depth to groundwater across the whole county to determine, is it shallow? You know, six feet, 20 feet or 100 feet deep? And what type of soils? We have soil maps to show, is it sandy, silty, loam, clay? And all of that would have an impact on the infiltration by water into the ground. So we would be looking at those factors as well.
An impact on wildlife?
Yes, that's part of it. Wildlife, habitat, correct.
Yeah, a bit of that is written down so the applicant would know exactly what they've got to comply with.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just point out that in the existing regulations requirements for the application for the conditional use, there is text that does require the applicant to provide information to address stormwater drainage, soil erosion, sediment control. And will detail how that will be addressed, prevented or enhanced by grading, revegetation, or other standardized construction practices in accordance with recommendations of the Sedgwick County Conservation District. Damage to existing vegetation shall be minimized, disturbed area shall be reseeded in accordance with the reclamation recommendations of the Sedgwick County Conservation District. Same with weed control, so that's in there.
Okay, well, Susan, we, a lot of it from the conservation piece of it, you just hit. I, I'm reading a lot of the public comments and there's a lot of concern about contamination. What are the potential concerns or what are the potential contamination things that come with?
Well, notice we added that all materials must be provided. When anything is produced, they create what we call safety data sheets, which lists the materials in something. You know, if it's still, what are the coatings on it? What's involved in that piece of material? I would want to see all of the safety data sheets for what they would be building. That would tell me what to test for. Now, I know a lot of people have in their comments been concerned about arsenic associated with some types of galvanized steel that has coating that has a small amount of arsenic. And I've looked at testing before anything's put in place, pre-development, during development and afterwards. And arsenic would be one of the things we would check. And that would not only put the people's mind at rest, but also if there's an arsenic already naturally in the groundwater, it protects the company as well, saying some of this material is in existence before we did anything. So it'd be working on both sides saying, this is the natural status of the groundwater ahead of time, during, and then after decommit, or during decommissioning.
Yeah, that baseline will be important. Okay, I think that helps and I've read a lot of the information you've already provided, so very helpful. Okay, you got it, Commissioner? Okay, Justin, our, go ahead, Scott.
If I could, so what I'd like to do is just reflect back what I've heard, just make sure that I'm hearing stuff correctly. So there was conversation about groundwater and ensuring that that's appropriate. And we, we noted the regulations that are currently in place. We also talked about concerns about infiltration and groundwater quality. And Susan went over what's in place already, but also what is recommended by the Advanced Plans Committee to help address that. And especially emphasize the testing both pre, during and post the project. Did I catch that all right?
I think you did.
Okay.
Okay, onward we go.
All right, so the third topic of discussion is the urban development and growth. This is the 2035 Urban Growth Areas Map. You have that map in front of you this morning. What the Urban Growth Area Map depicts is anticipated long-term growth patterns for the cities of Sedgwick County. These areas are not prescriptive or binding in nature, but serve as a reasonable indication as to where the future efficient and fiscally responsible extension of public infrastructure, services and corporate limits could occur by 2035. You also have an urban area of influence map in front of you, very similar. This is taken directly from the zoning code. I want to briefly walk through the urban areas of influence process. The first step, when we receive an application, would be the city planning commission, city being a smaller city, wherever the location of the proposed large-scale solar facility would be located, would be the city planning commission receives the notification from the M A P D that a proposed project is located in their area of influence. And that smaller city has the option to consider the item if they're not required to consider it. But basically, if that application comes into that area of their area of influence, their city planning commission reviews the case and provides a recommendation to the planning commission. The planning commission then hears the case with that small city planning commission recommendation. So just to clarify there, that smaller city, their planning commission does need to officially meet and make a recommendation. And then the planning commission, our planning commission, would hear that case with that small city planning commission recommendation. The fourth step would be the Board of County Commissioners, here's the case. If that small city recommendation is denial, then it would require super majority of Board of County Commissioners votes for approval. That would be four of five. So there is a process currently in place. This is, again, the existing process for a smaller city. If an application comes in to their area of influence, they have several avenues, generally through their planning commission, to voice their approval, concerns or objection to that particular project. During that entire process, the cities can provide other comments through the form of letters or a resolution or verbal testimony. Any questions on the area of influence process?
Let me just speak a little bit about background on urban area of influence. Before you were around here, I was chairman of the Metropolitan Plan. And during that period, area of influence were eliminated throughout the county. And I didn't feel very comfortable with that. So when I became a member of the Board of County Commissioners, we re-instituted area of influence. That's what we have today. I think they're important too, because take a small city in my district, let's take Idaho. And somebody wants to put a 2,000 home farm right next to their border. And that's going to influence the growth of that city from now on. So they're important. We have to consider those. And I don't believe that, and I, I support solar. I wouldn't have you guys to this point today if I didn't support solar. Because I'd have told you, you've been spinning wheels and we're going to ban it, we're not banning it, at least I'm not going to ban solar. We have to protect the county. We have to protect the cities also. And those cities have growth areas that they're concerned about. And we worked, once we reestablished it, we worked with the cities in order to make sure that their urban area of influence was something that made sense. It wasn't excessive, it was something that protected the city in the future. So I do believe that they're important. Do I believe we ought to extend it three miles or one mile from what it already is? No, we already established it, we've gone through that entire process. So we know where they're at. I don't want them to be bigger, but I want them to respect those areas of influence. So do I believe solar belongs in a current area of influence? No, I do not believe it belongs in a current area of influence. I don't believe that cuts out that much of the county from solar projects. So, and we're looking at this globally for the county. So I, I don't know how you rewrite all this stuff, but I, I think they've got a place and I'm going to respect those areas of influence.
And I can get into that a little bit further with, with these maps, if you're comfortable. This map here, you mentioned that three to five mile radius. This map was provided to us by Invenergy. That, that, what the map depicts is the three mile radius around those communities. The red being the urban area of influence and the pink representing the three mile distance. So as that map depicts, and, and really just to back up a little bit to explain where that three miles came from, generally it was a comment that was received through the town hall process as well as the survey. There were a lot of comments that came back that said that we should not have large-scale utility solar three to five miles outside of these areas of influence. So the pink depicted on this map here would show where solar would not be allowed. And the white depicts where it would be allowed. During one of our advanced plans committee meetings back in December, we had a committee member mention, hey, what would it look like if it was one mile? That's what this map depicts, very similar layout to the previous map. The pink would be where solar would not be allowed, it would be banned there. And then the white would show where it is allowed. To get to the advanced plans recommendations, their consensus was that no changes should be recommended to that urban growth areas portion. A bit of reasoning behind that, the contributing factors was that they were generally comfortable with the existing conditional use process. The advanced plans committee members believe that the current process provides the flexibility that a city could indicate whether or not large-scale utility solar would be a good fit for their community. So that kind of goes back to a couple of slides prior when I was showing that process of where they could jump in and voice their support or disapproval. And plenty of opportunities throughout the application process for those cities to provide input. That was the reasoning of the advanced plans committee when they were making that decision.
So a question, Justin, because you're not, advanced plans is not recommending any changes.
Correct.
So as of right now, there is no restriction to a solar project in an urban growth area?
That is correct.
And Kirk Sponson, Deputy County Counselor, just to make sure we're disseminating all 100% accurate information. A few slides ago, we did indicate that, that cities would have the opportunity to weigh in on, yes, that on number four would weigh in. And if they recommended denial, it would be four out of five B O C C votes. I don't know that it necessarily matters for your discussion contemplation here. I would just like to clarify though, that were the item referred back to the M A P C and then came back to B O C C, that four out of five requirement would drop off and it would just be a simple majority like you see in some other zoning or conditional use actions.
But my issue with not having, again, the zoning code very specific. And what can happen is that then the applicant isn't going to know whether it's going to be approved or not. I want rules that say, hey, if I check these, there's a good chance that it's going to be passed. Now, there's always something else can come up. But if we say that you can't put it in a, in a urban area of influence, that, that is very definitive. If we leave it open, that's not definitive. So now we've got people submitting applications and it gets so far along. And then they find out that they've wasted their entire time.
I would reinforce what, and even stated a little bit differently, is that I think what Commissioner Dennis is asking, and I, I feel like that is probably valid, is instead of having the flexibility of the conditional use permit to where it's inconsistent with what happens in different parts of our county, to get more of a rigid rule. I, I understand that conditional use permit allows flexibility. I, I think something that of this scale and of something of this importance, I don't know if it's, I, I think what Commissioner Dennis is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but is that the rigidity would probably be more favorable here? To get something a little bit more specific.
Just to facilitate the discussion a little bit further, do, do your preferences, would they be for any size of commercial solar? Or are you distinguishing?
Could you tell me what distinguishes commercial solar? I mean, is there a minimum? What is that at this point in time?
There is currently no minimum on commercial solar. Really, in order to distinguish, I think they referenced it already, there's some look at whether or not it's ancillary to the, to the primary use or not as, and then they look if it's, if the energy is being used onsite or if it's being sold. So those are certain considerations in the analysis. But in answer to your question about the size itself, there's no minimum or maximum at this time for it to be commercial solar.
What I would venture, what I would add to this is that we're fortunate because we've got the advanced plans committee who, you know, we're here to, to get a sense of, is, is this going to be the right fit for the community? What's been put together so far? What are your thoughts on it? How do you feel about it? If, you know, giving, so far I've taken back that, you know, there should be, there's, that the, there are concerns about kind of the vagueness and the ambiguity of this process as it's currently drafted up. And that having something that's more concrete with more firm guidelines that everyone can anticipate before an application comes in would be very, very helpful. And we can take that information back to advanced plans and say, here's the feedback that we've heard. Now, I, I think what Kirk is introducing is an interesting question, which is what about, you know, does size matter? And so rather than have you come up with like a, indicate a specific size or feel like you have to, I think the question is, does size matter when it comes to areas of influence? Is that a good way, Kirk, of addressing it? So I, I want to introduce that you can be ambiguous right now in your comments. We just want to get a sense on whether or not we should work with advanced plans to try and distinguish a size difference.
I, I, I think that might be, I think that might be helpful. Frankly, Commissioner, would you agree?
But we're going to talk about size here in a minute, I think.
That is true. I'm sorry, I'm jumping, jumping ahead.
Well, let me, let me, let me echo something that Commissioner Dennis said on this balance. And that this balance is difficult because we want to balance property rights of individuals. I mean, I, my family comes from an area in Western Kansas where farmers are making great livings, not having to farm their land and lease their land out right now to wind turbines. And it's generational impact to their families. We don't have that capacity for wind here in Sedgwick County. And many farmers that I've talked to around our community think that this is another opportunity to do some things like this. And to not, with the volatility of farming and some of these things, that this is an opportunity. So I, I would say I'm not against solar by any stretch of the imagination, but I do see the need to try to put some reasonable guidelines of how we use this. I would also say I'm also not against urban growth areas. I live in an incorporated Sedgwick County and I see that my home's in an urban growth area. Nobody ever asked me if I want to be in the urban growth area either. So, I, I mean, so I, I'm not against urban growth areas. I think they're important, but I'm not selling my land to the city of maize. And so I, I get that, but I, I do think that we need to, I do think that we need to have an idea of what this urban growth area impact is. I am not for a one mile or three mile extension by looking at the maps, personal opinion. But I do think that we do need to hear what our cities are saying. There's 20 cities in Sedgwick County and we need to hear what they're saying about what their proposed plans are. I think that's a reasonable consideration on the urban growth area.
Chairman, may I ask a question?
Please, yeah, sorry, Commissioner, I haven't.
No, it's okay. Just doing a little bit of reading on the topic, it sounds like there's actually a third description that maybe needs to, needs to be part of our discussion this morning, that is the idea of industrial, commercial, I'm sorry, industrial solar. The difference between commercial and industrial, commercial sounds like it's the intent that it's, again, it's large scale, but it's in the, the point of commercial is to generate electricity for the purpose of selling that electricity. Industrial may be, for example, let's just say Integra, for example, so that those have their, say Integra wanted to create a solar farm to run their own plant. And it's a large scale because they have a large operation out there, but it's not really, they're, they're consuming their own electricity. But it's still a large farm. That would be considered industrial use rather than commercial use. And so our commercial generation, the size of the solar farm may not be the only factor here. It might be, is the intent to, to generate electricity for the purpose of selling that electricity on the grid? Or is the purpose simply to generate electricity, potentially use it in your, in your operation as a industrial operation? For example, that might still be a larger, it might still be a large farm if that was the case.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah. If, if I could, sir, Commissioner House raised a great, a great topic and one that we usually try and cover a little bit more in depth. And one that we usually try and cover a little bit more in depth at the beginning. So I'm sorry that we, that I didn't. But one thing that I would add is that we're, we're here, we're talking about the principal use. So these are, these are applications where solar is the use. There's another category of solar, which is an accessory use. And in that instance, the solar is accessory to a different principal use. So the solar panels at Mays High School are an example of an accessory use. The example of a company that would have a solar panel or a small, a solar farm to help feed that company is an accessory use. Likewise, a house or an office building or something that would have solar panels on it. In that case, the solar is accessory to the principal use, which is residential or office. So in this case, we're just talking about where it is in fact a solar farm. For generating power that can go back into the grid and selling it.
So there is a definitive definition of what we're talking about here in our, already in our unified zoning code. Do you feel like that needs to be amended by any stretch? Do we need to amend the definition of what we're calling? Is that a worthwhile conversation that we need to have it?
I would defer to the board. I will say that. Prior analysis and prior discussions were on whether there should be different levels of requirements for different sizes of solar. I don't know that that was necessarily focused on as part of the solar moratorium. I think it was raised once to advance plans, whether or not that should be. As part of the expand conversation, but I don't think it is at this time.
Well, we can wait till we get to the size portion and I'll ask again. That way we're in proper order, but.
So my comment, Chairman, would be this, that it sounds to me like that could be an accessory use. But because of the the purpose of the solar farm, if it's a, if it's run an operation, let's say it's a, you know, let's say spare. Spare data systems or some larger operation in the community wanted to have a large solar generation. You know, you know, use, they have a large, I would consider to be a fairly large solar farm. But they're both consuming it in their own, in their own use. That would still be considered an industrial, that would still be considered a. The accessory use, the way that Kirk just described that, even though it's large. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's a great question because we're breaking a plan that we're going to endure for a generation. So.
What I will do, if that's okay, is this, I think this is an interesting question. And what I would like to do is take that back to M A P C advanced plans. Lay out the definition that we currently have and see if any modifications are needed to it.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis, any thoughts on that or?
I'm fine. We're going back to advanced plan.
Yeah, I would agree. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Howe. That's a great question. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay.
All right. Well, on to size and configuration. And as I go through this topic, there are several different subtopics regarding size and configuration. So I will address those individually. If you need me to stop during any of those, please just, just let me know. The first topic regarding size and configuration is setbacks regarding the advanced plans recommendations on setbacks. Specifically, the advanced plans committee recommended no changes to the unified zoning code. Their reasoning being that any additional conditions regarding setbacks may be imposed on a case by case basis using the conditional use process. And then again, the comprehensive plan, they recommended no change in there. The comprehensive plan being a broader document. They didn't feel a need to address setbacks. Specifically in that document.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Currently, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd say there's a residence out in county. And there's going to be solar on three sides of the residence. Right now, it's a setback 40 feet from the property line.
I believe so, yes.
And I think that you add something in here about if that property owner is a part of the project. That maybe they wouldn't have as much concern, but I have concerns in the long term. Because this is 30 to 50 years possibly. And in the long term, that resident isn't going to be there. Want to change over one way or the other. So I don't believe that 40 feet from the property line is sufficient because I don't know what the future holds out there. So residents, there's a couple of places in setbacks that I'm a little bit concerned about. First is setbacks from residents. The second is setback if there's any kind of battery storage facility out there. And how far does that back have to be from a battery storage, especially to a residence? So I think that those bear some significant research and possibly changes. Because I don't believe 40 feet is adequate for either one of those.
Understood. Is there any other comments regarding this particular?
Do you have any comps on what is we see in other parts of the state or other communities as 40 feet standard or?
Yes, we did some research with Johnson County, Douglas County, Butler, Reno, Sumner, Kingman and a number of others. And in terms of setbacks, they seem, they vary quite a bit. We've got 40 feet here in Johnson County. They had 50 feet. In Douglas County, they did them the same as what the base zoning district where the facility is located. Butler County has 150 feet from the public road. Reno had 100 feet from the right of way. Sumner had 60 feet in the front, 50 feet in the back and 30 feet on either side. So those are just some examples. There's many more. But to specifically address the residents. There was Clinton County, Indiana has 200 feet from non participating residences. 50 feet from non participating property.
Two thoughts. One, I mean, let's do the public road first. You had mentioned 150 feet. Is that because of visibility, Lynn? Do you have any thought on something like that?
We have a couple of different ideas on changing to that recommendation. But generally, yes, we're looking at site distance. We're also looking at future development of the road itself. Currently, on section line roads, subdivision regulations and county policy is 120 foot wide corridor. So this allows, and that's for the right of way. So this allows for an additional 30 foot setback beyond that.
Okay, good to know.
Chairman, one other question here.
Please, Commissioner.
So I'm curious. It sounds to me like we're focused on basically. You know, what county planning is going to be able to influence or control, but what about federal properties? I know there are places around the country where airports have had fairly large solar farms built in within their. Within their fencing, because it's unused land otherwise. They're trying to, it looks to me like it's trying, they're trying to capture that land use for something that is positive. And so they're doing. Solar farms on airport properties. I don't know. I assume that's, that would be considered federal control, I would assume. Like Eisenhower, but also military bases is another place where you'll see large areas of land that basically will not be developed. It's not considered residential or commercial use for the community, but it is land that's sitting there that may be utilized by the federal government. So are these regulations going to have some control over what they would do?
We are getting the answer from J R Cox right now.
Just to answer your question, federal properties are exempt. Airport like McConnell would not be exempt.
So, and yes, not McConnell, I'm sorry, Eisenhower. Thank you. Yeah, I was trying to noodle through that one. The other one too, that I would point out would be state properties, which would also be exempt.
So state and federal is exempt, but the airport would not be exempt.
That's, that's correct because that is city property, an airport authority property.
Well, we may want to address that specifically then because I think there's a. I'm not sure that the the topic of setbacks makes sense there necessarily. Or any other part of this discussion.
Well, what I would also offer is that through the conditional use process, there is the ability to waive some of the requirements. So these are standards that are set forth. However, through the conditional use process, they can actually relax some of the standards if. If the B O C C approves it that way.
All right. Thank you, Chairman.
Very good.
Continue on size?
Okay. Thank you. So let's, we talked about setbacks. As far as setbacks through the comprehensive plan, they didn't recommend any specific changes. Size limit, this would be the limit of the solar area, the solar farm itself. The majority consensus of the advanced plans committee was to not limit that size. Again, they believe that they could review each application on a case by case basis, using the existing conditional use process. Regarding the size limit of large scale utility solar from a comprehensive plan standpoint, they did not recommend any changes to the comprehensive plan.
Remember, Sedgwick County is kind of a unique county because we are a very urban county. We do have some wide open areas, but it's growing constantly. Every place you see, we're looking at zoning changes out in the county where we're becoming more and more urbanized. And so my considerate concern is having no size limitation. I don't know that I can agree with that. I think anything over a section, 640 acres is probably excessive. In addition, you need to take a look at spacing between major solar projects. So that you don't have one, approve one that's 640 acres and then another one comes in right next door. It's another 640 acres. Suddenly we're up to 1300 acres, you know, in a solar project. But I would think something needs to be added for something like a two mile spacing or something along those lines between making solar projects.
One other quick clarification, Chairman.
Please.
I was wanting to verify, when you talk about setbacks, this is setbacks from, from other lots owned by other. Other individuals. There's also setbacks from roads. That would be county roads, state, well, I assume state roads. Township roads and other types of roads. We need to be very clear and specific on. What, what items were set back from? Or is it just assumed? I don't know if, how do we assume that?
I think some of that interpretation was setbacks from road setbacks, property line setbacks, residential setbacks. I think there was some breakdown from all of those categories, correct?
As long as it's clear, that's fine. I just want any ambiguity here. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I'll just reflect back on what I've heard, which is we've talked about the setbacks from residences and specifically concerns. From residents, especially ones that are not participating in project, but also from those that are because of the fact that they may change hands over, over time. Also setbacks from battery storage, especially in proximity to a residence. Discussion about setbacks from right of way and Public Works and Lynn has provided some feedback on that. And then there was a question about federal properties, state, state, I mean, expand that to state properties. And also in general setbacks and how those would apply, maybe in instances where they aren't. Needed and whether there's flexibility for those. Then we've migrated into the topic of size and there's been expressed. Concern or question about projects that would be beyond a section in size. And then also concerns about the spacing between projects so that you don't have sequential projects that occur. And it pretty much eliminates kind of the size restriction. That's what I've taken so far.
Thank you. Summed up with comments, yeah.
Chairman, just a topic on the issue of size. We're talking about acreage only. Is there any other type of consideration for things like the. Amount of electricity being generated at what times, you know, I know transmission lines, it becomes a pretty big topic. If you have something that's super large, for example. So the issue of size may be more than just geographic. It might be also electrical, technical. Aspects of this solar farm is, is, so the issue of size only geographic or is there other, is there other aspects as well?
If I could, I would offer up that in the research that we've done from what other communities are working on. We've not so much seen size limitations in terms of the amount of electricity that's generated or necessarily the types of equipment or size of equipment. It generally has been on the land area that they occupy and the setbacks.
All right. Thank you.
I might be jumping ahead. I know we talked setbacks. We talked acreage. Have you talked about size of these panels? I see 25 feet is recommended. Is there a reason we arrived at 25 feet? I've also seen the number 35 feet. I don't know what then.
Either way, yeah, so it started out with 30 feet, 35 feet, and that is what is in the zoning code today. There was some conversation about should there be more restrictions on height? And I believe that that came from the advanced plans committee discussion because of kind of the scenic impact. The visual impact that the panels could have on adjoining properties or properties in the area. And so in discussing it and after receiving comments from both the public and from stakeholders such as those in the industry. And after a review of some literature and regulations that others have in place, they arrived at the height of 25 feet.
So you got industry feedback too and?
We did. We had an individual from Invenergy provided some comments about the typical heights of their panels.
Any thoughts on that?
No, but we're talking about size. I'm not worried about height. We can pretty well optimize 35 feet for any house. Or something that goes out in the county. So 25 or 35 feet, that's impacting one way or the other. But one consideration that may impact the environment is the coverage. What percent of the acreage that could have solar panels on it and which, how much of it needs to be open for. Base the environment focus. Hopefully covered coverage or not.
We have not. I'm going to have to look through the existing regs real quick, but I think that we do talk about wildlife corridors. When they're planning and making the application, but I don't believe that we've got a specific percentage of coverage. And there are communities that, some communities do, so that is certainly an option.
Well, take a look at it. Check for wildlife and see what we need to have for maximum coverage of the land.
Okay.
Questions? Anything else on size there?
So we did touch upon it. I believe this is the final subtopic regarding height and configure, excuse me, size and configuration, but height. Again, just to reiterate, limiting, this is the advanced plans recommendation, limiting the height of solar panels to 25 feet. With it to, with the ability for it to be increased during the conditional use process. Scott just briefly ran through. Their train of thought there and how we arrived at the number of 25 feet. Again, it's based on best practices, research and information collected from other counties. And then again, the contributing factor there as far as their comfortability advanced plans with height is. The ability to potentially increase that through the conditional use process on a case by case basis. No changes to the comprehensive plan, specifically calling out height during. Regarding large scale utility solar. Additional topics have sort of emerged during our research and throughout this process. Fire protection was a big concern. We did work with the Sedgwick County Fire Chief on that. And we did add language to the code regarding review of these projects. By either the City of Wichita Fire Chief or City of Wichita Fire Department. Or the Sedgwick County Fire Department District Number One, depending on the location of where that's located, if it's in.
Yep. I think that's important to get obviously their feedback. There's another fiscal objective here as well as. Is most solar projects of this scale have 10 year tax abatements. The fire district is its own taxing entity. And if we're going to be providing service and we have worked agreements with other organizations under tax abatements, a fee for service of some sort. I think that that needs to be under consideration. That our fire district is compensated for the service that they're going to be providing to any industrial solar. Kirk, any thoughts to that?
Commissioner, we can certainly look at and discuss it more at length.
It's a great answer, Kirk.
I do want to echo the chairman's comments is that we are also the chair for. Board of Directors from Fire District Number One. And I don't know what kind of additional training has to take place with our firefighters in the county. Especially fighting battery storage fires. Do we need more training for that? Do we need more equipment? Specialized equipment in order to be able to fight a battery storage location. And that's going to fall back on the taxpayers. So I want to make sure that there's some way that we protect the taxpayers. Against the additional cost of fighting fire at one of these locations.
Any other questions on those?
No.
Those were the main size and configuration topics. Those were, those were the four or five items that were the big takeaways. I've gone through each of those.
I've gone through each of those to give you a brief update on the Sedgwick County Association of Cities meeting that we held back on Saturday, the, the 20th of January. We had well over 30 attendees. Several cities were in attendance during that. So pretty good turnout. A lot of comments received, including regarding whether or not there should be limitations. There was some comments that we received saying that there should be a limit in size, scope and location of large scale utility solar, as well as the need to limit the scale of solar at a minimum within the area of influence. Limits on the overall size of the project itself, setbacks or buffers, a lot of the same conversations that we've had this morning and separation between solar projects. So these were the conversations, the type of comments that emerged out of that meeting back on January 20th. And that was a great meeting. A lot of good feedback.
It was. So again, just to reiterate, next steps, this is where we are. We're currently taking this presentation to the district advisory boards and citizen advisory boards throughout the month of February. Again, honing in on that February 8th date, that is the, the date that the MAPC advanced plans will consider this language and consider feedback that we've received this morning. Again, eyeballing that moratorium expiration date of March 20th.
Could I suggest maybe on some of the feedback you got today, maybe give us a, a chart of sorts is the additional feedback you got, here's the recommendation, additional feedback. That a way we can kind of summarize, because we have four or five different topics where there was additional recommended opportunities. It, it might be easier to just give us a short list of sorts, if that's possible.
And, and I would just point out that these are what we're shooting for in order to make it for the March 20th moratorium date. Now, there's been a lot of great discussion, lots of great feedback in terms of meeting the needs of the community. So we will have the discussion on Thursday with the advanced plans committee. I, I see some of them in the audience. I don't want them to sweat too bad because we don't need you to make a decision on the eighth necessarily. We may have a little bit more time. Because we have it going to the MAPC, the full MAPC on the 22nd. So you would still have another week after the eighth if you're not able to come to a resolution in terms of a recommendation. So wanted to acknowledge that we didn't put it in the schedule because we, we wanted it there in case we needed it, didn't want to have to use it.
We covered a lot of areas. I, I want to again, thank everyone that's been involved in this. This is probably the biggest project that we've given planning and shot down information. And it's probably the biggest project that we've ever given to the MAPC to work through. So you're doing a great job. I want to tell you that. But I do have some concerns. I want to protect Sedgwick County. But I want to make sure that if we can make solar, something that can happen, that we do that. I'm still pro solar. I just want to make sure that we protect Sedgwick County.
Yeah. Commissioner How, any last thoughts? He's doing therapy on his shoulder. I, I'll just, I'll finish you with this here. This is, I want to echo what Commissioner Dennis said. Thank you for all the work. There's been a lot of work. Thank you for the public feedback too, that has gone into this. I, I am a proponent of solar for a lot of reasons. But I also understand there's a balance and that we have to find a balance and it's a difficult balance. We have to balance property rights. And then these are individuals that should have some capacity of land use that is reasonable. Some of our farmers that are in unincorporated Sedgwick County. Our farmers feed the whole world. But we also have to balance their needs and their wants and their desires. You know, we also have a water crisis in this community. And, and a brewing water crisis is getting worse. And if they see a capacity to replace revenue on their land where they're not utilizing as much water for their crop, I, I think that that's something that needs to be in the conversation. These are important. We have farmers in Western Kansas doing this with wind. And we want to make sure our farmers have that capacity in Orlando, have that capacity in Sedgwick County as well. That is reasonable to allow them some decision-making on what they do in that regard to generate revenue on their property. I'm also in favor of diversifying, diversifying our, our energy resources and we must do that. We have to continue to do that. But we also have to balance growth. There's other needs in this community too. We need a lot more housing, significantly more housing. We need more commercial and economic growth. We need to understand what our cities want to do and where they're really see their growth coming in the future so they can pay their public safety bills. And, and they can do, we can pay for EMS and fire and sheriff and law enforcement and 911s. We need growth in order to do this effectively. We need to consider Wichita's plans and what they want to do when they go west because their growth opportunity of annexation in the future is west. And a lot of the land, based on those maps you showed, is in Western Sedgwick County. And Southern Sedgwick County. So, but we need to listen to these cities. Part of our job here with 20 cities in Sedgwick County is to understand and empower our cities to do what they need to do for their constituents, our shared constituencies. So I say all that, but you know, there's a, there's big balances here. These are important balances and all the work you're doing into this is, is really, really important work and, and and I think the finished product that we have here will be good for this community in a lot of different ways. So. Outside of solar, Tom, is there anything else that we need to talk about today? There's some other electives here. I see Kelly Arnold here. I see Brandy Bailey's here. Is there anything that you need to?
Chairman, only if you'd like me to give a report on last night's basketball game.
Folks, let the record show that a K-State Wildcat has publicly attacked a Jayhawk. And deservedly so. My Jayhawks did not play well and credit to, to your Wildcats. Thanks for that cheap shot, bud. Brandy, anything on your end? Okay. I think we're pretty good then, right, Tom? Okay. Chris, thank you so much. And those that came here today, keep giving feedback. This is important for this community. Appreciate everybody. B O C C morning, meeting tomorrow morning, 9 a.m. So have a great day.